Okay, I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, June 28th, 2022, meeting of the Berkeley Planning Commission. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Your call. Commissioner Bardis?
Here.
Vice Chair Kempner?
Here.
Commissioner Patterson?
Here.
Commissioner Stern?
Here.
Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Dolan?
Here.
And Chair Kapalansky let us know that she would be absent this meeting due to a vacation that was scheduled. So we need to make a motion to excuse her? Yes. Anyone?
A motion to excuse Chair Kapalansky.
Support. So, motion by Patterson, support by Stern. Can we voice vote that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Uh, next item is the approval of agenda. Does anyone have any changes or motions to approve?
Motion to approve.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the approval of the minutes from June 7th, 2022. Any changes and/or motions to approve?
Motion to approve. Minutes from June 7th. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on to communications. Um, Megan, do we have anything additional for communications besides what's at our desk?
Um, communications, um, you have the ones that were in the packet, so the emails from the McNallys on the June 7th. Um, and then the one in the packet on Blacktop Brewery from Katie and Nick Forte. Otherwise, what's on your desk?
Okay. Um, and what we have here is some communication on the Butter Provisioning Center from the city of Huntington Woods. And...
In the Michigan Planner Magazine.
Oh, yes, in the Michigan Planner. Moving on to citizen comments. This is for items not on the agenda. You will find have time to address agenda items during the meeting. For any comments, we ask that you come to the podium, state your name and city of residence, and limit your comments to three minutes. The Planning Commission will not engage you in conversation, but will be noting your concerns and will try to address them during discussions. Do we have anybody for citizens' comments? For items not on the agenda? Going once? Going twice? Okay, moving on. Um, old business. We have PSP 0222, 2222 11 Mile, Butter Provisioning. Would you like to give us a little intro?
Sure. Um, also, the applicant asked that this information be up. I first want to start off with an apology. There, you have at your desk a revised cover memo from us because of at least two items. Number one, the first version referred to in some instances, instead of 11 Mile, it was 11th Street, which is obviously not correct, so those were corrected. But also, it was brought to our attention on Monday morning that the wrong electronic plan set was in your electronic packet. I want to apologize for that. What this memo documents... You all got an email that morning. I'm hoping that you all had time to go through those other things in the electronic packet. The ones, the ones of you who received hard copy plans, you've got the most updated plans, which were May 27th, so you were working with the most up-to-date information. Also, the other thing I wanted to bring to your attention that's on page two of my review, of this review, is that the applicants offered two options for the screen required between the properties. There's a required screen between non-residential and residential properties. If you'll recall, when this went through sketch plan, the back border of these now two properties was an alley where sewer pipe was laid and still exists. Then, when that alley was vacated, the easement for the sewer was vacated. So, to put up the required six-foot Masonry wall with footings all the way along would, even though the applicant has said whatever is put up, they are fine with DPW coming in and doing whatever they need to, to get to that pipe. That DPW has communicated to us out of the two options they proposed, one, an eight-foot masonry fence with continuous footings, two, um, uh, it's a pressed wood board fence, but it almost looks more like a wall because there's piers. And if you look at the detail, there's wood flats that slide down. Those only have the footings once every inch, and they're much more shallow than they would be for the wall, for, for a Masonry wall, block wall. You, Planning Commission, have the ability, if you feel like it meets the site plan standards, to accept option two if you so chose. The main thing I would ask is that you pick an option in any motion of approval to choose to go that route. So then, it is clear, and then, and then there's a condition on what that option is on a revised site plan. So it's clear going forward what should be built along that, along that cor, along that screen wall. Because just having two options in a site plan makes me nervous in terms of making sure that the right thing gets built. There's the review from Carl Alwortman, and they recommended preliminary site plan approval with conditions, including a shared parking agreement to be reviewed by the city attorney, a condition that any change of use at 2200 West 11 Mile would be limited by available parking, which would be reviewed by the Planning Commission or part of the site plan by staff, and then also for the applicant to provide details on the use and operations at 1716 Coolidge Highway and 13634111 Mile to confirm that excess parking. And they may do that tonight during their, during their presentation. There's a number of comments that are from DPW. In talking with them, they said all of these things are things that can be taken care of before the pre-construction meeting, and they felt comfortable with it coming forward. HRC recommended approval, that's your city engineers, and they also recommended approval from the traffic, on the traffic impact study. They had one note about the size of the "do not enter" sign. And then the fire inspector has signed off. The other thing in discussions with the Planning Commissioner today, as you know, when this site first came to you, it was just 2222 11 Mile. And you, Planning Commission, expressed real concerns about the site circulation during that sketch plan review. The applicant has since bought the property next door to them, 2200 11 Mile. Previous to them coming to an agreement, we had had, I, as your interim community development director, had had discussions with the owner of 2200 11 Mile at the time, because they had, without submitting plans and asking for permits, restriped and repaved their parking lot. So we were trying to find ways to bring them into compliance because where they put the lines was not correct. Sometimes they were too, they, they weren't wide enough. The ADA parking space was not correct, not in the correct spot. So when the applicant was talking to 2200 11 Mile, my opinion was asked, and I said, "That would be lovely if this could be solved, either, either they have an access easement or whatnot." But they have a certain parking, if you look at that size of that building at 2200 11 Mile and you apply the parking standards, it asks for more parking than what's shown, and they've asked for a reduction. And that's another thing that you would need to look at tonight, and if you chose to grant it, you would need to make that waiver. And that waiver is based on what the, what that, what the current user is. And that user right now doesn't have a business license because of their parking situation. And I, as the administrator, cannot vary the rules. It's not my job. But you, during a site plan, can vary those rules. So I understand it's a little confusing to have the two sites, but wanted to tell you the history behind that, and the two sites, and then what 2200, how it's out of compliance right now, and how this is a good path forward to at least get that into compliance as well. And if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And so, in summary, you've got three determinations to make. One about the parking waiver that I just described, one about landscaping, and this is standard, you always have to make this decision, that the landscaping provided meets those site plan approval standards, and then also the screening option that I mentioned as well. And then there's a list of, there's a list of conditions that we would recommend if, again, you choose to grant site plan approval, including items to be approved by the city attorney, that any change of use to 2200 West 11 Mile be limited by the available parking. And we've stated that a flag should be placed in the city's building safety and assessing database to that extent. So if anything ever came through the community development department or the building department on that property, we always go to that database, and there, when we say a flag, it's literally something that rolls across the screen. The, the applicant provide details to the community development department on use and operations at those off-site parking sites, the "do not enter" sign size, sign, that a pre-construction meeting is required, and that all the meetings, all the items in DPW's letter must be received by the city before that's scheduled, approval from the city engineer, and again, if, and if a fence, the fence or the wall is selected, to have that specified in the motion, which one, so we can get a revised site plan. Also, for the public and for Planning Commission, I just want to remind you that this is a site plan review, so this isn't allowed use in this zone. And if it meets all of the requirements, it's an administrative decision. It's not a decision like a special land use or rezoning where you have some, a lot of discretion.
Oh, I have a question in regards to the letter from Huntington Woods. The objections based on distance from preschool, I, I understand that is not a, that's not a potential violation the way the law is written and with heavy rate.
That's correct. And when the applicant came for sketch plan, if you recall, I think it was February or March this came up, and we had a correspondence from the city attorney about that.
Okay.
I just have one other question towards that. It says Rogers Elementary School is within 1,000 feet. Is, is there an error in the letter, or?
The city's interpretation was that it's within 1,000 feet, the city attorney's inter, interpretation of ours zoning ordinance is that it's 1,000 feet within the municipality. So because it's outside of the municipality, it was his opinion that it's not within that 1,000-foot buffer.
Rogers is in Berkeley.
So on his page?
On page?
To, fourth bullet point.
That just has to be a mistake, I think.
I think...
Right. I think that's an error.
Because this is...
Yeah.
I'm trying to get to the 1,000-foot buffer.
Yeah.
It's marked on, on your map, but... So Rogers is?
It's not.
Yeah, no. Rogers Elementary is there. And this is the 1,000-foot buffer. Anything else right now? And that's sheet G02, for anyone who's looking on there.
Okay, are you?
I'm, I'm done, and happy to answer any other questions as they come up through the evening.
Do we have anything else immediately, or should, are we ready for the applicant? Okay, would the applicant like to come up and tell us a little bit about where we are now?
Good evening. I'm Grant Jeffries with Five Eight's Architecture. I'm the architect for the project. So we came in front of you in the February meeting with our sketch plan. And kind of the main discussion points when we came in before were the number of parking spaces and the site circulation. You know, at that time, we had a two-way drive aisle with one ingress, egress, curb cut that was for both. It was, it was tight. And there was concerns about how the dumpster enclosure would be accessed. You know, the dumpsters would have had to been pulled out of the enclosure for the truck to get to them, and then there would have been, it would have been tough turning around in there. The other kind of main concerns that were brought up, not only by the, by you commissioners, but by the neighbors, were the site lighting. We felt there was too, too much site lighting. And then that fence or barrier wall along that north property line. So I just wanted to kind of summarize the major changes that have occurred from when, when we last came in front of you till now, all of which are, their primary goal was to address those concerns that were brought up at the last meeting. Megan, could you go to page seven of that PDF?
Sure.
It's probably the best plan to look at, to give us an overall view. Yeah.
Sure.
So to address parking and the site circulation, my client has a purchase agreement in place for 2200 West 11 Mile, as Megan mentioned, the building immediately to the east. And what we've done is relayed out a combined parking lot for the two buildings with a one-way drive aisle angled parking. We went from 13 spaces to 19 in this plan. And although they are shared between both buildings now, Butter has basically taken over the lease for the tenant that is in place in that building, which is a company called Kirkco Property Management. And they basically use that building as storage for furniture, you know, stuff that they bring in and out to the various properties that they manage. They typically, at any given time, only need like two kind of full-size cargo vans, and they're not really parked there for any time. They're usually there between 7:00 and 8:00 AM in the morning to pick something up or drop something off. So what we've done is provided a loading zone in front of an overhead door on that building. Yep, that, right there. And that loading zone is wide enough that two cargo vans can fit side by side. We're actually moving an existing overhead door further to the north, just because it worked better with the parking layout, and actually widening that overhead door for Kirkco. Additionally, the, the dumpster enclosure is kind of up in that northeast corner, and we feel that there's better access for garbage trucks. Now, that would be a shared dumpster enclosure between the two buildings. So, you know, a garbage truck could pull in, make that turn, have easy access to the dumpster enclosure, and then back out, and then go out the one-way drive aisle back to 11 Mile. So easier circulation for that truck. And then also to address the parking concerns. So when we came before you last time, we had a shared parking agreement with the Masonic Temple on the west side for the, for the 10 or 11, I think it's 11 actually, spaces right alongside the proposed Provisioning Center. And, but the terms of that shared parking agreement were fairly limited. It was said it was for employees only and only during certain times. We've renegotiated the shared parking agreement with the Masonic Temple to not only include those 11 spaces with expanded hours, and basically during all, all hours that the dispensaries open, they will have access to those, actually 24/7, you have access to those, to those 11 spaces. And then the, is it eight or nine spaces on the other side of that aisle are, we're calling them kind of flex spaces. Most of the events that occur at the Masonic Temple happen 7:00 PM or later. So we have access to those additional spaces during the day, and then there's a time where it transitions, you know, depending on the event, how many spaces the temple needs that given night. You know, they're basically going to be in constant contact and sharing schedules with each other, and there's going to be a full-time parking lot attendant that can kind of direct people as that time approaches where those spaces kind of transition from being for the Provisioning Center to being for an event at the Masonic Temple. The parking lot attendant will start to block those spots off with cones and, and make sure that customers at Butter are not taking up those spaces. And then we just have kind of like a signed schedule indicating how we're going to provide signage onsite to kind of help aid the parking lot attendant in kind of directing traffic through the site. So there's that, we're also turning that into a one-way, so there's a one-way, only one entrance into that lot, so the parking lot attendant will be able to, you know, touch base with anybody that pulls into the lot. And then there's two exits, one back onto 11 Mile and one onto Berkeley Avenue. Some of the other concerns, or I, we were requested to do a traffic impact assessment at the last meeting, which we had Giffords Webster do. That report, I believe you guys have, and, and they did not have any concerns from the amount of trips that they anticipate being generated during peak hours, peak nighttime, peak weekend, peak AM hours, from how many people would be entering the parking lot at those peak times. If you have specific questions about that, I can try to answer those. To address the site lighting, Megan, maybe scroll to the second to last page? So for site lighting, we, we have a mural, proposed mural going on that west wall that kind of faces the Masons. And in the original plan, we kind of had some sign lights that were attached to the building, kind of lighting up that facade. We've, the rendering still shows them because that was done a while ago, but the new revised photometric plan, we've removed those just as a, way, because they were primarily just lighting up that mural. So, you know, in, in an effort to try to reduce the amount of light being generated onsite, we've removed those. Along the north side of the building, we've reduced the amount of lighting on that side, which is the side that faces the residential lots to the north. We, I believe, only have one sconce located above a door on that alley, whereas I believe in the previous plan, we had five lights along that alley side. And then we also changed the lighting, light fixture type A, which is on the front facades of the building. In the original plan, it was a sconce that both shown, had uplighting and downlighting. We removed the uplighting because we're, we're not allowed to shoot light into the night sky per the ordinance. So you can kind of see those diagrams on the bottom left of that page are, are kind of like 3D views looking at the building. And you can see there's very minimal lighting on the facades that are facing the north and facing the lot line. And then in order to address the concerns with the screen wall along the north property line, we present, like Megan presented, we have two options now. The masonry wall, which we have actually extended from six feet, which was the minimum per the ordinance, up to eight feet. Just having, based on some of the comments we received from the neighbors to the north, they would prefer that to actually be higher to block more of the view. And then we presented another option that would be a wood fence with just less, no continuous footing, just a much smaller footing every eight feet. So if there ever was the need to access that sewer line, it would be less intrusive excavation that would be required, and less, less intrusive demo. We are proposing that all the neighbors' fences would remain, and we would just build our fence, you know, on, on our property line right in front of their fence. So, yeah, I think those are the major changes. We've got representatives from Butter here. If you guys have questions about their operations, we also have Joe Anderson from Giffords Webster, who's a civil engineer, if there's any questions specific to stormwater management or the civil engineering on the project. But otherwise, happy to answer any questions you guys have. Oh, can we look at that? The supplemental info for those two?
Parking plan and the traffic impact assessment, or?
Oh, is that, it was that other document?
Yes, we have.
Well.
Oh, they all have hard copies of that at their desk.
So this was a document that wasn't included in the original submittal, but there was the comment about kind of providing some more information on those two other lots that we have kind of shared parking agreements with. So the plan is to utilize those for employee parking. We want to have as few or no of the, none of the employees that will be working at the Provisioning Center actually taking up any of those parking spots that we have onsite. So 1716 Coolidge Highway is a parking lot for the Window and Door Company directly to the south of it. That parking agreement does not overlap with their hours at all. They, they, they're open nine to four, Monday through Friday, and closed on weekends. The parking agreement we have for that lot is 12 spaces from 5:00 to midnight Monday through Friday, and then 1:00 PM to midnight on Saturday, and 8:00 AM to midnight on Sunday, which those are probably going to be the peak times for the dispensary anyway, nights and weekends. And then 13, 13361 West 11 Mile in Oak Park, this is just on the other side of Coolidge. This building is actually being leased by Butter to kind of be corporate offices. It's got 14 parking spaces, 15? 15 parking spaces. The Oak Park zoning ordinance requires one space for every 300 gross square feet. So basically, five parking spots are required for that use based on the Oak Park ordinance. So, and that's roughly how, they have got five or six people working there at any given time right now. So the, the excess spaces will be utilized by employees of the dispensary, and they have many, they're going to be shuttling employees back and forth from these two lots kind of at the beginning of each shift, when the shift changes, at the end of each shift. They're going to incentivize employees to ride their bikes to work, to carpool. They're going to give credits for taking ride sharing like Uber and Lyft. So their goal is to leave as many of the spaces within the Mason's lot and the combined parking lot between the two buildings for customers as much as possible, and encourage employees to park on these two sites. Both of these lots are, are less than a quarter mile from the dispensary. Both of these lots are less than a quarter mile from the dispensary. So that information's kind of just outlined in that supplemental info.
Any questions right now?
I just have one, for the wood fence, is that your proposed eight feet as well?
Yep.
Okay.
I have some questions. First of all, our city attorney has not reviewed any of these shared parking agreements yet?
They haven't been shared with them. Typically, they're sent to him after site plan approval.
Okay. So how many employees do you anticipate having onsite at any given time?
In which building?
The dispensary, the?
About 20, 15 to 20 is what's in the application.
Okay.
There could be upwards of 30 or more, but that's what we're projecting out of the gate as we scale. The building to the right, if you're asking about that, they don't have people there but once a month to do billing sometimes. And it's usually before 8:00 AM. So there is really not any need for the building to our left.
Right. So my first question is, do you, are there going to be circumstances under which you do allow employees to park next to the building anyway? Or are they strictly forbidden from doing that?
I think an all-encompassing answer that may alleviate the concern is that we're going to have 24 by 7 security and parking lot attendants. So if there ever is a need for movement of somebody for just support of the Masons or for employees to move for customers, we will move them on demand. And we have vehicles down the block, 24, all during business hours as well, to help and assist with that as well. And we are incentivizing and we are giving employees ways to get to work without, the first $10 is the actual incentive of their ride with Uber. And we are encouraging them not to drive to work. So we're trying our best to mitigate against potential pitfalls in parking and employee needs. But, you know, in acquiring the building to the east, which increased from, I think it was 13 or 14 to 19, getting an inflow to an outflow and then doing one-way on the Masonic side with adding dedicated 11 spots plus the nine.
Right.
I think we've made significant improvements from what we started with, but I hope I'm answering your questions in the process.
My question was, are you going to strictly forbid employees from parking in the space that you're sharing with Masonic or not? I mean, you're describing a series of incentives. That's great. But I just am wondering how firm this is.
My name is Derek Bandi. I'm the head of retail for Butter. So to shed some light on that, employees will be strictly prohibited from using that parking lot. Again, there may be a situation where for temporary parking, like let's say employees dropping off something or something like that.
I understand things like that, you know.
Minor instances of that.
Yeah, I get those kind of situations.
I'll also add, should we get approved for delivery operations, which we're planning on getting approved for, those cars will also not be dedicated onsite. And they will come for pickups in the rapid checkout section, which are dedicated on the Masonic side. So that'll also alleviate dedicated spots for people that could be sitting for a period of time.
Okay. So I have a couple of other questions about the shared parking arrangements. The building that you purchased, you mentioned you assumed the lease there and they are basically a kind of a warehouse operation right now. What do you mean by assume the lease?
So we've acquired the building and with the purchase of the building, we have taken over the lease of the tenant that the previous owner had.
You're the less.
So we're now the landlord. We've committed to have them for as long as they want with the permitted use, which they're having, which is the parking agreement that we've come to, both for our space there. Also, you'll see a lease for the space within our building, which was a requirement for a point credential. Zero parking requirements there as well, which alleviated the need for parking in a tenant's space that we had to fulfill a point requirement, which is our commitment to the city to make a multi-tenant building. So hand-in-hand through the, which was actually your feedback, Mr. Richardson, you said you want the city to have shared parking agreements?
Yeah, I do.
We took that feedback to heart. We bought a building for a lot more money than we should have paid. And now we get a tenant in a sale leaseback and we get a great tenant use. We honestly didn't know what the heck we were going to use that space for because we didn't want to diminish our parking requirements and needs with additional needed spots. So we shut that down with that agreement as well. You know, I like to pat myself on the back and the team, so I think they did a good job of overcoming what the challenges were of both the tenant's space plus the use. And should they decide to leave, we have plans to either get rid of the building or keep it. We will never violate the use or the parking that we've committed to. Our goal would probably be to tear it down should we be allowed to and should that get approved. And we would never change the use of their building or what they're doing. It really is just a storage container and that's what they're going to be using, the additional space in 2222.
I guess what I'm driving at with that is when you say you'll never agree to change the use, do you mean, do you mean the actual, the actual use that they're doing today or any use permitted under the applicable zoning?
I don't think we can, we can't do any, that's up to you guys to make that call on what the use of the building is. But the parking requirement that they have within their use is restricted by the parking agreement and the lease we have with them. If they leave after the lease, we're happy to make a commitment that we're not going to lease it out to somebody else with a parking requirement which violates what we had with Kirko, our assumed tenant, should this all happen.
Okay. And did you say you're leasing the place in Oak Park or you own it?
We leased it in a very long-term lease. The owner will not sell to anyone. And we have a long-term lease on that, which is five-year to start with options, multi-option of five-year to renew. And we are actively seeking space in surrounding areas to expand our needs as a business.
And getting to the home and door place, what happens if they move or go out of business? What happens to the shared parking agreement?
Sure. Within that shared parking agreement, we've got an option to purchase, we have the first option to purchase if he decides to move, you know, do any of those types of things. So we thought, that is a, you know, concern of ours. We want to make sure we have parking all the time. So we've discussed that with them and that would be an option for us as well.
And then one question about the fence. You say you're putting it on the property line. Would that put it right over that sewer, right on top of that sewer or by the side of the sewer? We probably covered that a few months ago, but I can't remember.
I believe, and one of the residents actually might have some more info on this, I believe the sewer is actually just on the north side of the existing fences back there.
Oh.
But I don't know that for certain.
It's in my, in our notes.
Okay.
Okay.
The city was looking for, I'm going to stand up for my entire.
Up to the chair.
Anyway, my name's Dave Lucy, I live directly behind these guys. Anyway, the sewer runs, the sewer runs straight down the middle of that alley, right down the middle. And it could be a foot or two change, but what I'm saying is, is they were looking for, you've got a manhole in your parking lot and that manhole and whatever else is hooked right to that sewer. And they were looking for the manhole that existed in that alley. And so they started digging around and one day, lo and behold, they found it and it's directly under my fence, straight in my fence sits here and there's a manhole like this. So if he builds his, you're going to be on one edge of that manhole. I'm over the center part of it because I stayed back from the property line, you know. He told us, build a fence, you know, just you can do that, you know, but that's what we did. And so, yes, to answer your question, it's down the middle, all the way.
Okay.
Thank you. Megan?
Just to clarify on this drawing, if you look, I would suspect that these dotted lines are the old plat or the original plat.
Mm-hmm.
So because you could see that these going down 11 Mile are very small skinny lots. You can see the alley that was originally there. Typically, the sewer, a lot of times the, the, the infrastructure is placed to the side of an alley rather than not down the middle because it was used for some sort of traffic. For, the purpose of the alley is for trash removal and circulation in the rear. So it wouldn't be unusual for a pipe to be one side or the other. But I think if you are concerned about that, Commissioner Richardson or anyone else, you could ask for the, could ask the applicant to verify in the field where the pipe is and that, to make sure that during the pre-construction meeting, the location of the fence is verified that it will not be directly over the sewer pipe.
Yeah. We did have the sewer line scoped and based on, you know, they basically fed a camera down the sewer and they got to the point where it did connect into?
It did or did not?
It did. They got to that point. And based on the amount of feet, because it gives you a live reading of how many feet the thing has traveled, the plumber estimated that it was just on the north side of that existing fence. And we'd be building our fence just on the south side of that.
Okay. Well, I want to hear from the residents what kind of fence they prefer, but your position is you'll, you'll build whatever fence we, of the two choices, you'll, you're fine with either one that we decide on.
Yeah, and I believe DPW said they preferred the wood fence.
Yeah, well, that was the reason for my question because I don't want to saddle the city with a ton of extra expenses if we decide it should be a concrete fence and that, that has to do with where is the sewer, I think, so.
It looks like the sewer is right at the property line now because you guys did locate the structure and it was at the, it was at your fence, which would be the property line.
It was dug up in 2019, right behind. Their access point used to be three feet into my yard. In 2019, it was all dug up, they put the access point into yours and we were three feet easily.
Can I ask you to come up to the microphone because anyone at home and then state your name?
I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay.
Teresa Foreman, I live at 2221 Princeton. In 2019, the previous property owner, they were having a pipe issue, so they had to tear down the fence, dig everything up. Their catch basin was in my yard, at least three or four feet. It had always been there, I'd known it was there. They dug it up, moved it back into their property, but that, at that point, it was three or four feet into my yard, the sewer, the main sewer line. And the plumber on it was, I don't know, who do we all use around here? Nelson Brothers? And there's a lot of feedback between me and DPW too with the previous owner on that. So there should be communication.
Thank you.
Thank you. All the questions.
Any questions?
I guess, a question just to double check, clarify. So the lights along the west side of the facade are gone? Okay. And then how deep is that sanitary sewer back there?
As far as I can tell you, on my end of it, I watched them because the house just to the east of me was a rental for a while. And the building that they purchased from, this one they have just purchased, a little, what is that, 22?
2200.
2200, that one. They had a collapse on the sewer that came from their parking lot, right next, right next door to me, probably maybe from here to her, from the fence. And how I found it, I saw it, the ground was doing this. It looked like quicksand going down. And I called the city and they came and they got ahold of the owner of the building. That sewer pipe is at least 15 feet down in the ground, maybe 16. And he, the guy hired, the guy hired people from the unemployment office at that time and they're out there trying to hand dig it and the sand kept going down and they dig, dig, dig. Finally, they brought equipment in because the city guy told them, he says, the owner said, I'm not paying to dig this up, there's no sewer there. And they proved it to him and he had to use the equipment to dig it. But it's approximately 15 to 16 feet. I've said this before and they verified it too.
Okay.
You can, you can check it through DPW, but it's about that far down.
So much deeper than our footings will be.
Yeah, that was, that was kind of where I was going with that. So it is quite deep. So you guys weren't able to dip it? The survey wasn't able to dip it then? Who said that the manhole was not able to be open because it was under the fence?
That is correct. My name is Joe Anderson with Giffords Webster Engineers. And when our survey went out, we located the cover of the manhole, but like it's been discussed, it was under the fence, so we couldn't lift up and determine that. And the city didn't have accurate enough records at the time. Sure. So.
Is there, where best, I guess, is there somewhere in the package that I missed where it shows both options for the fence?
Like A2 sheet?
A202?
Yeah, A2 or something.
I just was looking at it last time. Sheet what?
A202 should be page 16 of the PDF, Megan.
Upper right. So the one, detail six is the wood fence with the foundations every eight feet.
Yep.
And then detail three is the, the block.
Block.
Okay. And that's, that's got a continuous footing?
Correct.
What is the length of the fence? Like, is it going behind 220 and 222 now?
Yes.
Is it going behind the Masonic? The Masons?
No, no. Just the two lots that we own.
All right, good. Good. Anyone else?
Oh, he answered my question about the fence. The one sign, the do not enter sign, I think is, you might, there's a better sign to use just as a reference. It has the R5-1 code, but there's a better one, I think it'll be more clear that people are used to. It says red and do not enter from the MUTCD.
Oh, yeah, we, we.
It's on your signs schedule?
We actually did change it to the red circle one. I think the, the older version had the old version and that was one of the comments we got and we did switch it.
Yeah, use a larger size and two of them, I think.
Yeah, we do, we do have them on both sides of those one-way drive aisles.
No, I, I'll set.
And I have one question. In, on the, there's a memo from McDowell and Associates on the permeable pavers. What sheet is that? At the end of that memo, it says, note that retained water in the infiltration bed could seep towards and adversely affect any close residential basements or below-grade structures causing potential wet basement walls or possible flooding. The nearest houses are 60 feet away, thus it would appear that water seepage would probably not be a concern. However, this is not known for certain.
There's underdrain under that permeable pavement though, isn't there? Yeah.
That is, we've worked with McDowell for years and it's standard boilerplate kind of covering themselves by future potential. But with the, everyone in Berkeley, I used to live in Berkeley, we know it's clay. And we're taking, I think we're down to a 41-inch-thick stone and sand base now instead of clay with an underdrain at the bottom between the clay and the stone. That whole area is going to collect all the water and drain it out. It's going to be graded away from the northern properties towards our catch basins, towards the middle, towards the south. And so the potential of any water seeping back towards the houses and the basements is highly unlikely in my professional opinion. We've done everything we can to improve this. I mean, this is, we're disconnecting our stormwater from the combined sewer that's back there, so it's, and putting it back after we treat it and detain it, we're going to release it slowly into the existing storm sewer in 11 Mile. So all in all, it's a much improved site. So, you know, but again, nothing is 100%, but that's kind of what we have to do.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to open this up for citizen comments. I will remind you again, come to the podium, state your name, try and keep. come to the podium, state your name, try and keep it to three minutes, and we'll be taking notes. Anybody want to comment on this?
Dave Losi, 2189 Princeton. Um, I, uh, I would, while, I would much prefer a block wall, I'm a realist in some of it. There would have to be some engineering study done, I'm sure, to figure out if the weight of a wall that high would push down too much on the sewer pipe. Uh, there's one house I know of that's hooked up to it, uh, down the block, uh, one of the newer homes that was built. They were one of the lucky ones that didn't have to pay to have a street dug up. They went right in their backyard, right in the backyard and put it in. But anyway, uh, if it's going to be a fence, uh, I was explaining to one of the gentlemen here that, uh, standing in my kitchen door wall, when cars come in that parking lot at night, the lights shine above my eight-foot wooden fence. There's a ten-foot block wall that Doggy in the Window put up. That was part of their agreement, because they had a special land use deal there. Um, that wall, that height would block the cars coming in with their lights on at night. And so it would be nice if, and I like the idea that they're putting a horizontal rather than a vertical fence, that's kind of cool. Uh, but it would be nice if that fence could be ten-foot rather than eight. I know it's not a requirement, but it would be nice, because it would block that driveway lighting. But that's, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa Foreman, again, 2221 Princeton. I just want to thank you guys for taking our suggestions. This plan is much better, but I, like Dave, have concerns about the wall. Um, I believe their quick pickup employee access is the north-facing door, correct? Are you guys going to be using that for quick pickup? That's just for employees?
Just for employees and for receiving inventory.
Okay, so you're not going out to cars from there?
No, the quick pickup will be going through the front, the front door and with the, uh, the parking attendant station.
Great, thank you. But I'm with Dave again, a masonry wall to keep the sound, the light, just because of the parking and, and busy and having a security guard back there twenty-four seven. We all have dogs. If somebody's milling about behind there, um, the masonry would be much better for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Denise Losi, I live right behind them. Um, I too agree that anything that they put there, our biggest thing is to have some kind of privacy, which is what we're going to lose if we have that, have that short of a wall. Like Dave said, I'm just reiterating the same thing. When they pull in that parking lot and their lights are going up, especially if they're going to be open late at night, it would be, would be nice not to have car lights constantly, you know. So if we could do something to help with the noise and, you know, not that cars are going to make a ton of noise, but the light and the noise, that would be beneficial for us, and that would give us some kind of privacy. We can't do anything to lower our house or anything. So something with a taller fence would be great.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so we'll move to our discussion. Um, Megan, do we, can we even ask them to put a ten-foot wall up?
There's no maximum on the height.
Okay.
Um, I will say, a, a ten-foot wall is unusual. Um, and I don't know whether, uh, I would defer to the applicant to say whether a ten-foot, um, fence would be possible with the design that they are proposing. Um, the grade change, I've had experiences a lot with, um, the grade change between an existing site and, between a site and someone's house. And that, that ten-foot grade changes, it can be a real factor in nuisance. I, there doesn't seem to be a lot of room to maybe plant something that would grow taller than the, taller than the, um, fence or wall, um, in a short amount of time.
Right.
Um, so, I mean, I think that's a discussion that you should have with the applicant. There's nothing in the zoning to prevent it. Um, but I think also there's the factor of, I, I, I'm pretty sure that DPW would say, in terms of trying to get to a sewer pipe that's in trouble, a ten-foot masonry wall would be worse than an eight-foot masonry wall.
Okay, thank you. Discussion. Who would like to start?
I just have a question about the wall now. So is Doggy in the Window, do we, Old Doggy in the Window, ten feet? Like the, I guess it would be like twenty-one fifty-eight, maybe? That's what I looked at on my phone. So that one is ten feet already? So it would just be next to that, y- your properties? It would kind of match what's already there?
The Doggy daycare place actually was in 2200, I believe. Yeah, and that, that ten-foot fence is not at the property line, right? It's at-
Where are the, the-
The original property line. So that, that ten-foot masonry wall would be coming down, because we'd be going to the property line. Um, I think we'd be, I think some of Megan's comments about the ten-foot fence, uh, we share some of those concerns. I think we could potentially maybe come up with a solution where the section that kind of i- is aligned with the, the people coming into the parking lot, when the headlights would be shining north, maybe that section of fence, we add something that doesn't look tacked on, is in with the design, but extends the height of the fence in that specific area, maybe?
Your designs are great, you know, it's just, that's the only thing. I think I mentioned it to you on, I thought it was kind of weird how I had like, I said, man, that, right there.
No, unfortunately, our, our comment time is over. Sorry. Thank you. Are you good?
Yeah. So you would be agreeable then to raise up the driveway where the headlights come in?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you. As long as, I'm sorry? For sure. Yeah, that piece of plywood or something.
Well, I guess we haven't talked about the landscaping, so I'll go there.
Sure.
And I think, I think it's definitely meets the standard, or the requirement of the ordinance. So I don't have any issue with, with that.
Is there, I can't quite tell how, what the width between the back of the parking lot to the property line is, but would it be possible to get some arborvitae or something in, in the area of concern?
Instead of ten feet or with ten feet?
No, um, with the-
Can you come back to the microphone? Sorry.
With the eight, with an eight-foot wall, just thinking out loud. Um, because I'm trying to envision something that looks good, going from eight to ten, that's-
Just a small section?
A small section, yeah, I might, I'm not sure if it's-
Like ship in ones that are that large? Those, they take a long time to get that big.
Yeah, that's true.
So, no, I, I wouldn't be willing to ship in that much weight. I know what freight costs, and that's very expensive. Uh, ten-feet, uh, fence versus masonry sounds like it's dangerous, so I, I don't know. You, you guys tell us what you want to do, and we'll probably agree to it.
I also want to point out, um, is that section between the edge of the parking lot and where the wall or fence would be, um, is turf pavers.
Is, is what?
Is proposed to be turf pavers. So, I mean, you would be switching one thing for another. Um, and just looking at that, that doesn't look, that looks about-
It looks pretty-
Yeah, I don't have a scale with me, but it looks about five feet, and I don't think you could get anything to grow tall there and survive.
In my mind, maybe like on top of the wall, but, I, I don't know. It's not my design, but like a flower pot that would give you three feet. You know, something that would-
A row of, of hanging plants?
Something that would grow three feet.
Like in Royal Oak, when you drive down Royal Oak Street, you see those big hanging, beautiful plants?
That go up. I mean, you're getting two to three feet.
It's seasonal, though. You need permanence in what you're asking for to satisfy what the neighbors are asking for. So.
I mean, I don't know why you couldn't put a-
Fancier box.
Make it out of wood and paint it white and, you know.
Like flower pots?
Yeah, something like, for two feet.
Box with-
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we could probably do something. I'd like to see what this actually costs and what makes sense, but you're talking about putting weight up now on a fence. Is, can we know if it's masonry or fence first? Before we make this decision?
Yeah, we should talk about that.
Because that, I think masonry wall is much pricier, I would assume.
Sure.
That's super, yeah. And I'd need to know what to build on top of that. It'd probably be easier versus a fence being reinforced to hold that kind of weight. And then also irrigation to those may be a pain, just like our green roof. But we're into it.
The, uh, discussion between you and the city, um, in the event that main, sewer maintenance is needed, um, i- is the, is the fence or wall going to be torn down and replaced at your expense or at the city's expense?
Uh, we have a draft easement included in our packet, and I believe it says in there that any repairs necessary after sewer repairs from the city would be on, at the expense of butter to replace what was there.
Okay. And my other question along those lines is, uh, if, if we're building the fence, it's not right on top of the sewer, does that, does that help with the issue of sewer maintenance at all, or, or is it still going to be a tremendous hassle to tear down a, a, uh, masonry wall to work on a sewer that's fifteen feet deep?
It, it, it still will be a hassle. The, to start, DPW's preference, um, is that nothing is in the easement. Um, in talking to them, they recognize that this is a unique situation, and actually, the applicant is volunteering to give this easement, um, to get, for the city to get a piece of pipe protected. Um, so we think that they are willing to have a structure in the easement that's being given by, volunteered by the applicant. Um, however-
How wide is the easement?
The easement, I think it's ti- five feet, ten feet? Ten feet off the line?
Five feet on our side.
Five?
On, yeah. Well, I guess we're, we can't offer an easement, and so it's five feet from the property line.
From the property line, and, and the sewer is probably to the, just to the north of the property line.
But they want the, they want, ideally, you want a ten-foot easement, even around the pipe, so you can get to the pipe. Um, and if there's a problem, they've got to get to the pipe, however they can get to the pipe. And quite frankly, they're going to cut through anything, um, to get through it. Um, and I, I think from a, from a public health point of view, it would be better if that structure would be easier to get through. So from that point of view, and in talking to DPW, there's a preference for the fence. Um, in that-
Because it'd be torn down more quickly?
Yeah, because you don't have to go through footings. And then you know where the footings are, and then you know where you can dig. Um, whereas if it's a continuous footing, then you have to go down or around, or, or, or you, it just makes the situation more complicated.
All right, that, those are helpful, uh, information. Thanks. And, and we could have, um, we could, with a wooden fence, we could have, still have some, something on top of the eight-foot to block headlights.
If you're going that direction, what I would say is, and again, if you choose to approve the site plan, in the motion to say that, I'm just, this is for instance, that you, um, it's approved upon the condition that, um, a wooden fence per the detail of option B in the site plan be put in with a ten-foot raised portion along the driveway to be evaluated by staff, um, prior to the pre-construction meeting, to shield headlights and to adjacent properties. So that way, you, you're saying what it is, you're saying the dimension of what it is, what the purpose is, and if you wanted to add tasteful or something like that, you could do that. But I, I, um-
I think staff probably has pretty good taste.
Yeah. So it, it sounds like, although a masonry wall would be great, it sounds like the wood screen wall would probably be the better option in this case because of the, the sewer.
Mm-hmm.
Can DPW go through the yards behind on the, on Princeton?
Again, I'm seeing what their preference was. I don't know how they would do the operations in the fields. Um, I- They'd have to dig it all up.
Yeah.
I mean, they're, they're, if it is essentially, the footing would essentially be on top of the sanitary sewer. So to get to the sanitary sewer, you'd have to take the footing, the entire length of that footing up.
It is on it, or the sewer, the line is far?
It's so close, it, it wouldn't matter.
It's really too close.
Because the footing is, the footing's going to be probably-
Wider than the block.
Yeah, foot and a half or two feet wide.
Yeah, and actually, because we didn't want part of the footing to overhang the property line, the footing is off-centered, which means it's even larger than if it was kind of like centered underneath the block wall.
So to dig a hole fifteen feet down.
Yeah, it has to-
They have pretty much, have a fifteen-foot wide spot over the sewer.
I think no matter what, if they have to access a section of that sewer, both the residential fences and a section of our fence would probably have to come down. So it's just, it's easier, if there's fo- only sm- much smaller footings every eight feet, maybe they could just like remove the section of fence in between those two footings and-
Tear down the footing as well.
Right. It would just be less intrusive, hopefully.
So I guess maybe that's the first question we, we deal with. Wood or masonry?
I'll say wood. I, I would just note that if there is a sewage emergency, I, I would think that the residents there would be among the first to want to have quick action to rectify the problem. And, um, you know, I understand the desirability of walls like you have along the, the expressways, you know, but, um, you know, we have to balance factors here. And if we can, if we can take care of the headlight problem, I, I think we've probably done a SAS factory job.
And if I could just add, there's no gaps between the wood, so it is a solid wall. It just wouldn't be, it probably wouldn't have as much sound dampening properties as a masonry wall, but visually it would block all the light, because there's no, there's no gaps.
It's probably not going to be terribly noisy on your site anyway, I, you know.
I would concur with Mark. It, I, I think probably wood would be a better, better solution for any future maintenance.
I would go with wood, um, but I do want to see the ten-foot.
Me too.
Feet driveway blockage for their lights.
Same for me.
Same. Wood and ten feet. Um, landscaping. How do we feel about landscaping?
I was okay. I think the landscaping is perfect, spot on.
And the parking waiver? Anyone have an opinion on the parking waiver?
So how, how many spaces?
Questions?
Yeah, I, I have a question. So how many spaces, um, would it be a reduction in? Or is this, this is shared parking? I'm sorry.
It's shared parking. So the shared parking with 2220 and Masonic?
The, the, the parking math on the sheet makes sense to me.
Three businesses.
Yeah, it's a thirteen maximum, but because of the two, it's like less than, it's thirteen. It's basically taking the maximum from 222, minus four spots for bike parking. So it made sense. All, I mean, all the math is correct on that one sheet. I did not see anything off with that.
Yeah, and if you, you look at the Carlisle-Wortman review, there's a table in there. Um, so the wholesale and resale, uh, um, the wholesale and warehouse establishments, um, if you use one per two hundred fifty square feet of usable floor area with five hundred fifty-eight, that's three parking spaces. Um, it's just that, um- Um, it's just that, um, the applicant is noting that due to the current use of the building for warehouses, only fourteen spaces are required. Um, and they're converting nineteen on, in addition to the other shared parking agreements, and what they're, they've been saying is that they don't think that there's gonna be a, they don't think that there's gonna be a conflict because of when the two uses operate. Um, and so we just essentially want you to bless that situation. And then also in your motion, say that if the use changes, that they have to come back for some sort of parking evaluation by staff or planning commission, while the applicant has stated that they are committed to that use. Um, they may not always be the owner of this provisioning center, and it may not always be a provisioning center as well for that use. And so when you have the shared parking agreement with the two uses, when we get a turnover in use, and, and I'm thinking two or three uses down the road, um, we wanna make sure that there's enough parking on site. Um, and I feel like the condition with the flag and BSNA, um, would put enough structure in for staff to be able to know that situation and deal with it down the road.
And the language should make clear that by use, we mean, we don't mean permitted use, we mean the actual use that is-
Yeah.
-being made today by these sites.
Yes.
That's what it should say.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and the shared agreement goes with the business or with the?
The, the parking-
Site? The parking agreement?
The parking agreement, what it should be is that it should be recorded with the county so that it runs with the land.
With the land. So if one of the other businesses even go change, then how does that, like, let's say the Masonic Temple or the parking lot for the door store?
So if it's recorded with the land, then that essentially becomes, um, an encumbrance on the land. Um, and so the next property owner, um, if it's recorded with the county, th- should be aware of it as long as they're not doing a property transfer in a way that they wouldn't do title work. Which is a rare instance, and then they would have to come to the city anyway for a building license of any kind or change of use, and it would be flagged here.
And you said the city's, um, attorney will review, um, the shared parking easements?
Yeah, mm-hmm, and that can be part of, I, I think in our, our letter, that's one of the conditions, is that they, the attorney reviews, yeah, the attorney must, the attorney should re- review shared parking agreements, agreements on placement of items in the right of way, the public easement agreements for sewer and both, and properties, and the stormwater maintenance agreement.
So I'm in support of the parking waiver, item number one to consider.
Anyone else have any more questions or comments on it? Um, my comment, um, I'm good with the waiver, um, and I think having the off-site shared parking is awesome. Um, cause it doesn't necessarily meet our ordinance, we can't make it a condition per se, but I'm gonna say, please do that, it sounds like a beautiful idea. Um, and I guess with that, is somebody prepared to take a motion or make a motion? For more discussion?
I just wanna acknowledge the fact that the layout, ingress egress layout, looks so much better than it did, so.
And I do also really appreciate how well you took ours and, and the residents' concerns to heart when you, when you came back to us. Thank you for that.
Yeah, this, this is a, a major improvement over what you brought to us before. Not that that was really that terrible or anything, it wasn't, but, uh, this is, um, this is addressing concerns, and we, we do appreciate your taking, taking all of our concerns and the residents' concerns into, into consideration.
Thank you for the feedback, and we were happy to do it. It's actually much better for our business. It's gonna produce a lot more flow for our customers, and getting in and out would've wasted a lot of humans' time, and that's not what we were there to do. We're there to make a pleasurable experience for the neighbors, the city, and our customers, and uh, we may not have seen that as clearly if we didn't get that feedback, so thank you as well.
All right, I can do a motion to approve PSP zero-two dash two-two, which is two, 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 eleven-mile road, butter provisions. Um, and the, we recommend the parking waiver be allowed, is that it? Right, yep, and we, uh, recommend that the, the proposed landscaping meets the ordinance one thirty-eight dash six, seven, eight. And the, um, screening options, I guess the condition of the approval is the screening option of the wood fence at the shown proposed eight-foot height with a ten-foot allowance at the driveway, entrance, ingress driveway. Is that enough?
Um, with ten, with, uh, can I ask that it be, um, with ten feet required for the section, um, adjacent to the driveway, rather than-
Okay, yeah, with the ten-foot section adjacent to the driveway.
Mm-hmm.
And conditional upon the following items, one through seven listed in the staff letter dated June twenty-eighth.
Are we good? I would support that. If you can call roll.
Uh, is there any discussion on the motion?
Oh, that's right. Any discussion?
You nailed it.
All right, uh, Bartis?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero, uh, six, zero.
Congratulations, guys. Thank you so much for your work.
Hey, guys, don't forget, is this yours?
Oh.
Marty not here, we didn't even ask to see this.
Yeah, those are yours. Correct?
Those are your building materials, do you run them?
No, 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 those are somebody else's.
Now you got greedy.
All right, moving on to item number two, PSP zero-six, twenty-two, thirty-seven, thirty-seven, twelve-mile, the Philip Rowe houses. Making a minute to get-
Apologies.
Yeah, no.
Um, all right, um, this is probably very familiar to most of you. Um, at your March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two meeting, you approved the site plan um, with a number of conditions, and our staff review, we've gone through about, um, how they were met. Um, and one of the last conditions is that the conditions of approval are finalized with a review by the planning commission, so that's why this is before you today. Um, you can see that, um, CWA recommended site plan approval. They noted that there's some modifications to the front elevations, which the applicant will, um, walk you through. Um, there was a review from DPW, all of these essentially are the same as they were before, and these can all be taken care of, um, with a onsite pre-construction meeting. Um, Hubbell, Roth and Clark recommended approval. Um, we had included the cover letters from both submittals, um, so you could see how things had changed, um, and what was going on. Um, we would recommend that the planning commission, if you choose to grant site plan approval, um, have the following conditions. Um, road commission of Oakland County approval, approval of the stormwater maintenance agreement by the city's attorney. Um, a pre-construction meeting is required, and before that's meeting, all the items listed in city's DPW letter, um, must be received by the city and approval from the city's engineer.
Thank you. The applicant like to come up and, um, walk us through any major changes?
Hi, uh, Daniel Stocke, uh, owner and designer for the townhomes. Um, so I'll just hit the design real quick. Pretty much the, the front facade, uh, changed just a little bit. On the third floor, it used to have a three-foot balcony off the master bedroom, but structurally, it just wasn't working out with the lateral loads. Um, Marty, who was previously here, he wasn't really in favor for the balconies either, so I removed those. Um, and put a deck on the back of the building, the south part, which would be cantilevered over. So that's the main part that's, that changed of the building, and then I just have some final material selections. Um, so that's, those are the minor ones. Uh, doesn't affect any of the waivers for setbacks that I got approved in March. Um, as far as um, RCOC, I mean, the permit is submitted, they're still reviewing. Um, my civil engineer that drew the traffic plans for me knows the reviewer, and he sort of reviewed it on the side, and he said that it looks pretty good, but they're still taking their time. Um, and then, I'm sorry for the confusion for the dumpster enclosure. Um, so when I originally submitted back in June, beginning of June, or end of May, um, I took away the dumpster enclosure, but I re-added it back in. Other cities allow each tenant to have their own garbage spol- garbage can in the garage, but I was unaware that the city of Berkeley had, um, a parcel rule of you can only have two cans per parcel, and this is only one parcel. So I re-added the detail in, uh, it'll be structural brick to match the base of the building and a, uh, and a PVC coated black mesh gate, um, for the front. So that's all in. I moved the bike rack from the south of the dumpster to the north of the dumpster per your request. Um, and there were a few issues for the traffic control plan being adjusted for my neighbor, the Hungry Howie's at thirty-six seventy-five. Those will be adjusted when I have RCOC finally get back to me, um, and I'll be in coordination with that uh, owner of that business or that piece of property when we're working on the, on the site. Um, and then more of just the construction schedule for utilities, we'll coordinate with the city of Berkeley forever, whatever we need to do, so. Um, I think that is it, mainly just the, the small approvals, so.
Right, thank you. Um, questions? I think this is pretty much kinda check-a-box sort of a situation.
Yeah, when he, would, when, when the speak came before you before, not all the en- the engineers felt that they couldn't sign off because they didn't have the geotechnical at that point in time. Um, and because of the stormwater structures that were proposed, they felt like that was essential information. Um, and the reason then, we had the contingency for it to come back here is if, in case there, the design had to change in some way because of the, the geotechnical and the stormwater. But-
Yeah, sorry about that. The geotechnical was done, clay soil as usual per Berkeley, and it, it was changed to a solid pipe detention system.
Um, on, on page, uh, four of the, uh, staff report, it notes, uh, there, there's a little bit of a discussion about the roof deck. Is that, first of all, is, is this situation unresolved, like it, or has it been resolved?
Um, so, um, CWA had always mentioned that they, um, were a li- they were uncomfortable with the roof deck. You discussed it at your last meeting, um, and really didn't agree, um, with that comment, um, from them. Also, um, Carlo Wortman Associates had a comment about, um, the side elevations needing to be broken up, and you disagreed with that and told me you liked the design as it was. Um, so I don't think that those are outstanding issues, no, so I apologize. You gave that impression.
Any other questions? Do we allow vinyl coated chain link for dumpster enclosures?
We have no regulations on dumpster enclosures. However, if you feel that they do not meet the standards of site plan approval, you may ask for something else. Um, and those are just for the, that's just for the gates.
Right.
It's not for the entire enclosure. The rest of the enclosure is-
Yeah, it's structural brick to match the, the base of the building, and if you don't want like the, the mesh screen on top of a PVC, uh, gate, I can go to a womanized wood or, um, a composite, composite wood to match, you know, that's whatever's suitable.
Okay, so let me, um, while we maul that over, let me just see if we have any citizen comments on, um, on this item. Anybody wanna come and speak to this? Okay, um. All right, so are we unhappy with the, uh, would we prefer something else?
No, I'm actually, I think it's better than like a wood dumpster enclosure, not necessarily by looks, but by like how it withstands the test of time. So I just-
I kinda like the idea of composite, if it was offered.
I think it's fine the way it is. I mean-
Dumpster.
I mean, you're looking at, right.
It's a dumpster in a parking lot, so. This is splitting hairs, I think.
No, I just, for some reason, I remember a meeting, I, I probably am just combining too many different things that I deal with at my day job, and that not being allowed, so that was really it.
Most communities do require a, a wood gate. I mean, that's, this, this would be, I don't know, any other community that would allow this. But I don't have a super strong feeling about it either. It's, it's a dumpster.
I, I have no problem doing a, a wood gate or composite that's similar.
Well, is anybody, can anybody offer which would be the more effective, uh?
I, I'm just thinking composite, cause it would stand longer than wood in my mind.
I agree with that.
Well, for the most part, composite is, is on the wood structure, so it doesn't really-
I'm sorry.
Uh, there's a wood structure, and then you put the composite on top of it.
I'm thinking like wooden fence, that's gonna bleach out is what you, in my mind, when you say wood gate.
Right.
That's what I'm thinking, like gray, maybe cause I stained my deck all weekend, but, uh, like a composite, I don't know, pick a color, you know, that matches, shouldn't say pick a color, that matches, it is a dum- very important dumpster.
We are okay with that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine. I, let's not turn this discussion to a dumpster fire.
All right, well, does somebody want to make a motion? Anyone? Or talk about it more?
Oh, yeah, I'll, um, yeah, I have no issues either here. So, uh, make a motion to approve PSP zero-six dash two-two, thirty-seven, thirty-seven, twelve-mile road. Um, approval, um, with the following conditions referenced in the staff letter dated June twenty-first. Items one through four, at the end, one through four, and the additional requirement to provide a vinyl fence gate on the dumpster. Wood vinyl?
Composite.
Or wood composite, sorry, wood composite.
Can that be on permit?
What?
Can I provide that on permit?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, just as a matter of form, um, I, I recommend that we always, when we're going, when there's a motion approved, we note in the motion that we made a finding that the, the, the proposal complies with the requirements of the ordinance, uh, section, um, plus the waivers that we've approved. I, I think we're actually technically required to make a finding, so I think we should note that.
Um, you had a previous approval where you made those findings and granted waivers in this case? Um, you could re- echo, echo those from that mo- from, from that?
That's okay, but we're, anything we're taking action on, it-
So-
So approval conditioned with all other waivers and conditions from the prior approval? Is that?
Yep, that would be.
Cause it means the landscaping wasn't in question here, it was already approved, the way I'm reading this, like as example.
Is there a second?
Support.
Any more discussion on it?
Would I need to go, come back?
Nope, nope. Um, Commissioner Dolan?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stern?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bardis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kempner?
Yes.
All right, motion passes six to zero. The applicant will get a letter with further instructions, but essentially, direction from now is to submit things for building permit, and you can go through that process.
Unless you want to come back.
Right, unless something massively changes, we are, he does not need to come back to us.
No, and not unless he does something, not unless there's a proposal for something that warrants a site plan amendment at the planning commission level.
Right.
Thank you all, thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
And moving on to new business, PSU zero-one twenty-two, twenty-six eighty-four and twenty-six eighty-eight, Coolidge Highway, The Black Hop Brewery.
This case is a little bit unusual in that the applicant has already received site plan approval. The letters of that and the plans, the site plan, plans for the facade changes and the interior renovation were part of your package. And then to Commissioner Richardson's, well, where Commissioner Smith used to sit, right there in those envelopes, if anybody's interested, those are the building materials that were submitted by the applicant for, they're over there, I'm going to move.
Like, like to see them?
I mean, the people behind the camera on that.
Oh.
So these are all their building materials.
Do we know what goes where, or? Oh, these are all going to be used.
For anyone who is interested. So, but essentially, the facade and the interior have been approved. In the zoning ordinance for the city of Berkeley, public seating, outdoor dining is a special land use in this district. So that's the reason this is in front of you today. If you, and so there's different standards for those, and I'll go through those. Specifically, in the review from Carlo Wortman Associates, they noted, they asked that you discuss the following items, what are the specific hours of operation, and is a waiver for the proposed lighting warranted? A note on the lighting, technically by the zoning ordinance, you should not be able to see the light source of any light fixture from the street, from a public street. So they have string lighting over the outdoor seating area, which technically violates that, however, it's our recommendation that you could waive that. And then, so that's one of the findings that you need to make as you go through. And then also, that DPW again had a number of comments, these are the same comments that they had when we went through administrative site plan review, and all of them can be taken care of before, before building permits are issued. The fire inspector asked that the rear gate from the outdoor seating area swing in the direction of egress, and all gates be equipped with panic hardware. And I've gone over the lighting, and finally, in making a determination, what you need to look at are the following things, the proposed use will promote the use of land in a socially and economically desirable manner, the proposed use is necessary for the public convenience at that location, the proposed use is compatible with adjacent land uses, the proposed use is designed so that public health, safety, and welfare should be protected, and the proposed use will not cause injury to other property in the neighborhood. So those are your standards for special land use. I know that in the short time I've been with you, that hasn't, special land use hasn't been before you before. You make a recommendation to city council, and city council approves. Again, we really think that you should look at hours of operation, and the noise, and will there be any nuisance from this site to adjacent properties? The site is pretty unique in that it backs up to a field owned by the, owned by the schools. And then to the Dorothea, which is technically a street, applicant is aware that that may become a public plaza space, and it also abouts a public parking lot. I also want to say that the applicant met with the business owner next door, because in their initial application, we were very concerned about circulation. And they worked well with the folks next door in order to come to a solution that was mutually beneficial, and I think also could benefit everybody in that whole block, to improve the circulation and have a place for trash that's enclosed. So if you choose to recommend the following item, recommend approval to city council, we ask that there be a finding that the lighting as proposed gives adequate consideration to the conservation of energy, minimization of glare, light pollution, and light trespass, and that the special end-use application meets the standards in section one-three-eight, six-five-three, with the following conditions, restrictions in hour operation or noise levels as determined by the planning commission. If you do determine, to determine that you want to put some conditions on that, I would ask that you put measurable details, i.e. to this time, to this time, or above this decibel, or that it meets the noise ordinance. That snow must not be deposited in adjacent public or private properties. DPW flagged that they felt like there maybe wasn't enough space in that area that was done. As we know with other developments, snow removal is often a problem. There's probably enough ways to push snow in the site, but just so it's clear to the, to this property owner and any future property owners. And that an onsite pre-construction meeting is held before infrastructure exterior site work begins. And before that meeting, everything in DPWs and engineering letters need to be taken care of.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi.
Hello.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about, about your building, or about your requests, or whatever you want to tell us about?
First, I'm Dorian Hall from Black Hop Brewery. I'd like to thank the panel and everyone here for giving us the opportunity to speak regarding the special land use application that we submitted. As far as the design, I'd like to have design team really kind of explain, you know, the material and everything that goes on with this, with this property.
Good evening. Harold Grumlinger, Design Team Plus, principal architect, like to thank Megan, and also Ben Carlyle for working with us hand-in-hand on this project. They've been really advantageous to have them on the team. We did meet with the property owner. Obviously, the exterior of the building has been approved as it was explained, so we're not really going to bore you with too many details of that, but we are doing an extensive facelift to this building, as you know, it is purple and pink, and has some ethos on it with some weird fins, and we're cleaning all that up, taking it back to its original structure, and then adding in some really nice aesthetic materials like that iridescent black tile on the front to create some pop on that street corner, as well as the awnings up above. We did meet with the building owner next door to go over parking, go over circulation on the, on the site. We worked through them extensively on that. Thea, my associate, will kind of go through that a little bit more. Couple of things I'd like to mention that's kind of exciting in just our research is that Dorian and his partner are going to be the third black-owned brewery in the state of Michigan, which the Michigan Brewers Guild has been pushing for diversity, equality, and inclusion, as well, it's going to be the first in southeastern Michigan. So we're excited that, that that is coming here to Berkeley. We feel that this is going to be a great draw from the communities to the city of Berkeley, as well as it's going to become a meeting place for the residents of Berkeley to walk to, enjoy a glass, a pint of beer, some great food, and they're also going to be having a distillery inside, so they're going to have some craft cocktails that are going to be available as well. So it's a unique venue, since it is not just a brewery, it's a brew-stillery, and we're really pleased to see this coming here and presenting this to you, and you're also giving us the approval on it. I'll let Thea go through the points that were some of the questions in the application that came from the review, and hopefully we can answer those up for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, my name is Thea Donahue, Associate of Design Team Plus. We can't express how excited we are to bring this brewery to Berkeley.
Ma'am, can you talk louder?
I'm sorry, I'm soft-spoken. I'll get close. When we first started meeting with the Black Hop team, we asked for three adjectives that they'd like to describe the space, and they said crazy, sexy, cool. And wow, I mean, you'd never hear those words to describe a brewery, right? So this is something special, and it's something coming to Berkeley, and we're so excited to bring it to the city and work and continuously work with the city to do so. In review and response to Carlo Wortman's concerns and questions, the specific hours of operation for the outdoor seating would mirror those of the interior tap room. And he had also stated that there was the waiver for the proposed outdoor lighting, and if that would be warranted, and I will address that further in the review comments. So the DPW noted a few comments, Miss Dig ticket shall be requested, and indicate the utilities, and the general contractor will ensure that Miss Dig is engaged to locate existing utilities and locate those on the site prior to construction. It's recommended that existing private sanitary sewer lateral be investigated for size and condition, as well as it is recommended that the existing private water service is investigated to confirm size, material type, and condition. Both of these items will be included in the mechanical and plumbing engineering plans, and it will be indicated that the existing water service and sanitary sewer lateral are both scoped to verify condition, material, size, et cetera, prior to construction. Item number four, the proposed outdoor seating and loading may be problematic when dealing with snow removal. The proposed outdoor seating area will be utilized during the months of April through October. Outside of this window of use, the planters can be removed and relocated on the site to allow for greater access to the snow removal area. Item number five, there's a general concern of wastewater discharge from these types of sites. Our client intends to side-stream their spent grain, allowing farmers to use this for feed, or bakers to use this for dog treats, among other uses. And this will reduce the overall biological oxygen demand, BOD, in the discharged wastewater. Chapter three of GLWA rules indicate that there's a typical surcharge for these BODs, as well as fats, oils, and greases, phosphorus, and total suspended solids within the water. And a sample of testing will be required to determine the surcharge. Item number six, there appears to be no changes to drainage pattern on the proposed plan. That is correct. However, our client intends to resurface the asphalt of the property along with conjunction with the neighboring property. As the neighbor indicated, there was pooling that sometime occurs at the exterior doors. And so there will be a note in the construction documents to allow for positive drainage to be achieved, and sheet draining to the existing alley, as well as the existing storm sewer systems. Item number seven, that the striping plan will be reviewed for verification of stalls required parking, handicap considerations in site circulation. No parking is proposed on the site as it's not required per section one-three-eight dash two-two-two. And that's due to the proximity of the public parking area to the site. The traffic control plan will be provided by the general contractor prior to permit and construction to the authority having jurisdiction for approval. And then item number nine, we are aware that this will have to occur. And then in regards to the gates having the panic hardware, we do plan on having all of the gates in the direction of egress locked with panic hardware, an exception to the north gate, that will not be locked. And in regards to the lighting and the potential waiver, the top of the canopy structure is ten foot eight above grade, and the string lights are intended to be mounted no lower than eight inches below, meaning that they'll be mounted at ten feet above grade. With the average eye level height of five foot to five foot ten, per Architectural Graphic Standards, twelfth edition, the lights will be strong about five feet above the average eye level, meeting the requirements of section one-three-eight dash one-four-three B. And in addition to that, the string lights are intended to be a point-five watt LED light, which produces three-foot candles. And if they're mounted at ten feet, we can assume about a seventy percent degradation on the light, bringing us to point-nine foot candles directly below each of those lights, which is within the requirements of one. And then for the use of the property, if it will promote the land in a socially and economic way, it'll be used per the zoning ordinance, and the proposed outdoor seating will support the local community, it'll allow the community to gather in ways that it hasn't on the site currently. The proposed use is necessary for public convenience at that location, it'll be a more desirable atmosphere, as well as additional seating will be provided to the patrons of the brewery and assist in beautifying the area, which is currently just a parking lot. The proposed use is compatible with adjacent land uses. There are restaurants within walking distance that do have outdoor seating in place of parking, and so this will be consistent with that precedent. The proposed use is designed that public health, safety, and welfare shall be protected. The patrons will be protected and shielded from the shipping and receiving areas, as well as the parking in the adjacent lot with the planters, as shown. And all outdoor material and furniture are intended to be durable and have minimal maintenance required. And finally, the proposed use will not cause injury to property in the neighborhood. It will not cause injury to other properties. As was stated by both Harold and Megan, there was a meeting held on May seventeenth with Megan, as well as the adjacent property owner and those of Black Hop, to ensure that the health and safety of the adjacent site are being met. Again, thank you for your time and consideration, and we're so excited to bring Black Hop to Berkeley.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
So this is not really a big deal, I don't think. I, I was counting the, the seats in the proposed addition, and I only came up with forty-six, you have fifty-eight on the, on the drawing. Can you, can you just discuss how you came, why the seating is fifty-eight?
Megan, if you can grab, go to like the first page with the building data chart.
Yeah, I really can't hear you, what you're saying.
So the building data chart, which is right up there, we don't determine occupancy by counting seats. Occupancy is determined by the building code. So for unconcentrated tables and chairs, it's one person for every fifteen square feet.
So it's a max.
Bar, bar seatings, yeah. So bar seating is based on one person for every twenty inches, and then we have standing, tanning room only area, which we can account for too. So it's based on the total square footage of the building divided up by the areas. It's never determined by just counting seats. And I think the fire marshal or inspector had made mention that he had verified the seating and approved and felt it was accurate.
Like I say, it's not a big deal, I just wanted to clarify it for my own information.
No, appreciate that, thank you.
So I don't have any questions, but I think for our items to consider, number one, the lighting as proposed gives adequate consideration to conservation of energy, minimize of glare, light pollution, and light trespass.
So I think before we get to discussion, as opposed to questions, I have to open, I have to officially hold a public hearing.
Okay.
Sorry.
No problem.
So with that, I will open the public hearing at eight forty-eight. Is there anybody here who would like to come and speak on this? Going once, going twice? I will mention that we had an email that spoke in favor of it, and thought that it would be a great addition to the downtown, and they were hoping that it was going to happen. Seeing no one else coming to the podium, I will close it at eight forty-eight as well. And now we can go back to discussion, I'm sorry.
Sure, yeah, no problem. So the, I guess for our consideration for special land use approval, since it's already site planned approval, item one regarding the lighting, I think, I guess we need a waiver technically, or?
While I heard what the applicant was saying in terms of how you could do the calculations to meet it, we don't have a photometric plan, and I would feel more comfortable if you granted a waiver for the lighting as shown, so that it's on the record that you saw it, you approved, you recommended approval of that.
It, it's just for the light shown, though, they can't then change it?
Correct.
Okay.
And if they, if they wanted to change it, they'd have to, they... And if they, if they wanted to change it, they'd have to, and especially for lighting, it would be an electrical permit, it would be looked at, and it would have to meet the ordinance, and if it was a major change from this, it would come back to the, it would come back to planning commission.
And the only lighting in question is the string lighting?
Yes. The lighting that's on the building would comply.
Yeah. For discussion, then I have no issue, based on the explanation with the string lights.
Yeah, I think they're fine.
Yeah, I think it looks very tastefully done.
Looks good, and there's, I don't know how close the nearest residence is, but it could be very close.
I mean, these are the string lights people put in their backyard, right?
These are the string lights that people put in their backyard, and.
Not like industrial string, string light.
Again.
They're just the nice looking ones that I could hang up if I had another pole.
I think I have expressed my frustration with the level of detail, or not the level of detail, in your zoning ordinance. I would definitely say to remember this case, if you ever revise the zoning ordinance, especially the lighting requirements. So, because something like string lighting could be an exemption. So, but again, I would just feel more comfortable for the record, rather than asking the applicant to produce a photometric plan.
Yeah.
Right, and then the issue with snow seems reasonable, that the outdoor seating is not going to be used in snow months anyways, so.
That's where the snow can go.
Right. I guess one item that Megan, you mentioned was about noise, and that's not listed here, per se, as one of the items to consider.
Joe, could you speak a little louder?
Oh, sorry, yeah, the noise, it wasn't listed as one of the items for us to consider.
I think it's under restriction on hours of operation.
Oh, yeah, sorry, 2A there, yeah.
Yeah, and so their hours of operation are 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM, and the hours of performance with any outdoor noise or implication, that would be 7 to 11:00 PM. Our concern was that we wanted the planning commission to look at the site in context, because you know your community best, based on the attributes of this site, would having ambient noise from 7 to 11:00 PM cause a nuisance to anyone surrounding, whether it be a business or residence? When you look at it from an aerial point of view, because of the field behind this area, and because Coolidge and Dorothea are right there, any resident where somebody might be trying to sleep during these times is quite far away. But again, we're not experts in your community, you probably walk these places, have been there at night, maybe you live in this neighborhood, you would know better how noise travels and what's going on.
When you're having performances in the summertime, I, you're, there's a reference in here to music on the, in the outdoor area. Is that music you're referring to, is that from the performers? Or just piped, you know, just piped in music?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
No, just, just like, I guess you want to call it ambient noise, but just piping, just low speakers, low noise speakers.
Oh, okay.
Not live bands?
No, no, I mean, unless you guys want to have a live band, then we're all for it. I mean.
Oh, we have festivals sometimes.
If Dorothea's going to go away, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to have the best experience for the people that are going to be at Dorothea, than opposed to kind of limiting the things that we can and can't do for, you know, Berkeley's community. So, I'd definitely like to have, you know, more of a concert, I guess, later, but, you know, we'll see how the neighborhood reacts to things and take it from there, but no, we just want to just have speakers.
But you will have performers inside.
Yes, definitely.
And they'll, the windows will be, probably be open in the summertime?
Yes.
Okay. Well, you know, I don't see this as a problem, I'm not acoustical expert, but if you had to find a venue to have live performances, this is, how could you do any better, really, in our packed in community than right next to a field? But, you know, sound can do some funny things sometimes. I don't think the adjacent businesses are going to be an issue, because mostly they're going to be closed.
And my neighbor was really, he was really happy actually about us moving there and stuff, so.
So, I'm not.
His wife was happy.
I'm not going to make an issue of it, I, but we do have a noise ordinance, and people are able to complain, and, you know, I guess you'll just have to be aware of that.
Yes, sir.
I tend to agree with the lighting, I think the lighting is fine, I don't think there's, you know, again, it's like what we could put in our backyard, the string lights, and they make a nice ambiance that I think would benefit everything around it, especially if we end up closing off Dorothea and making that a pocket park. Snow, yes, and as far as the noise, I know football sometimes practices in that field, and marching bands sometimes practices in that field, and a group of teenage children are not quiet. So, I think any noise that might be heard from you is probably pales into comparison of what a bunch of, you know, football player, band kids do.
I wouldn't go with sexy, cool.
Anyone else?
I have a question about the pocket park. Does, are there plans in the books for what that's going to look like, or?
I think they have just recently hired a company to try and start sketching out that stuff, the DDA.
Would that impact parking at all, or access? I assume it would impact access, because if they make it a park, then you just go off from Franklin from the north, and to Telpa to the south?
Yeah, I think that is the concept, but nothing is, you know.
I think it's a wish more than a.
Gotcha.
And that was one of the first things we made the applicant aware of, even, I think when we met with you pretty early on, was that the potential was for that Dorothea to be closed. And I think you seemed excited about the possibility of that being next door.
I think it would be a plus.
Yeah, that would be a, yeah, huge plus for you.
I think it might be prudent to note for the record that because this is, there's no parking requirement, that we've looked at the anticipated capacity, that's why, one of the reasons I asked that question. And I count 50 spaces in the public lot, give or take one or two spaces. And I think if they did, I think if they did have a requirement, it would be 35 spaces, based on the square footage.
25.
25. But in any case, the, the, the public parking exceeds what I think their requirement would have been, and I think it makes the parking situation, it indicates the parking situation is going to be acceptable, given also the, there's not likely to be much overlap between this business and the requirements of this business and the other businesses along that stretch, due to the differing hours of operation of those businesses. So, I would just, I just wanted to say that because, you know, I think, I think we should lay out, lay out all of our, lay out of all of our reasoning and all of our assessments of the situation. Did you have something to say?
No, excuse me, I was saying we actually expect walking traffic as well, so.
Yeah, okay.
Out of curiosity, so we, this is a special land use for just the outdoor seating area?
Yes.
And it goes to city council for recommendation?
Yes.
Does that, is anything contingent, since this wasn't a location that sold alcohol that now it is, or like, it's not like, I think for us to be concerned about, but I guess I'm just curious if.
So, City of Berkeley does not regulate alcohol sales like some other municipalities where it's always a special land use. I, from what I understand, when we originally met with the applicant, because you're a microbrewery distillery.
Yeah, we're the manufacturer.
With a tasting room, that is a different license than what is typically the liquor license that's given to, let's say, you know, any.
A bar.
A bar, yeah. And Berkeley has, and so they were going through a different process than was typical, but that's not something that's decided at city council anyway, and the city has been encouraging of having restaurants and bars in the downtown area for the vibrant nightlife, to continue that within the downtown area.
So, I, do you have another question?
No.
Are you making a motion?
I was going to.
Yay.
I thought that's, Joe took the first two. I may need some help on this, because there's a lot of things. I'm going to make a motion to recommend approval for PSU-01-222684 through 2688 Coolidge Highway, with the following conditions, that the lighting as shown on the plans, the string light, with the waiver for that to be used. And if it changes to go back through electrical permits, I'm looking at Megan, but she's writing.
If it changes, it should go through a staff review.
All right, staff review. Snow removal, I think we've discussed that and found that that is adequate, and all other meetings must be held, obviously, in accordance with the staff letter dated June 22nd, 2022. And I think that our findings are sufficient for recommending the approval, based on our discussion.
Do we need to mention the noise levels? That we've, 82A?
Oh, yeah, and our noise levels that we discussed, we think that this will comply with our non-nuisance laws.
We think it likely, likely.
Yeah, likely will.
Likely.
You feel good about that, Megan?
So, if the band comes around, we're okay?
Right, right, it's not you guys, as long as you don't host them, they're underage, don't, don't let the band in, they're underage.
Yeah.
Is that fine?
Yes.
Okay, enough.
Do we have a second?
Thank you.
Support.
Any discussion?
Commissioner Dolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stern?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bardis?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Kempner?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, 6-0.
Congratulations.
When do you plan on opening? I'm more.
Yeah.
I'm more curious about this now.
How quick are you going to get this done?
We're looking to start our construction this fall.
And then next year?
And then next year.
Yeah, it's exciting.
It's really not a good time to open during the winter. We're trying to stretch it to the spring and kind of get.
Do you have other locations now?
Do a couple of soft openings and things like that, so, no, we partner with Draft Horse.
Oh, yeah.
Get all the top line, so, been kind of just doing some partnerships out there with those guys.
Welcome to Berkeley.
Thank you.
We're excited.
You know, kind of the first, I don't want to say minority, yeah, well, the first minority owned, you know, so, yeah, in southeast Michigan, so it's an excitement for us, we went to School Craft College, we did the whole program, so, we're excited. My brother-in-law, he would be here, but flights are being canceled, so he's stuck in, I mean, in a vacation spot, so.
It could be worse.
But we're really excited for Berkeley to have us, so I think it'll be a really good partnership for everybody. We met with the DDA, and he was, he sent us a list of all the events that are going on, so just, kind of just partnering with the community, so thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks, yeah.
Thank you.
Good luck, good luck with it.
Your next step is city council, and they, they only have one meeting in July, I think it's July 17th, they'll send you some more information. It's just being forwarded straight, but I would recommend you put the date on your calendar, and I'll confirm it in an email to you tomorrow.
That you have to reach out to Mike, I haven't seen anything come to the DDA board, I'm the liaison to the board, so. Right, and then with that, you pretty much will deal with the DDA, unless it's something crazy and it has to come back to us, like a mural, well, even murals don't really come to us, so.
No, they go to the CBA.
Yeah, well, not in the downtown, though, the downtown, they.
Right, no, yeah, no.
So, you'll just probably just meet with their design committee for that sort of thing, and it's much easier than us.
Thank you, guys, welcome.
Have a good night.
See you in a year.
All right, liaison reports, anyone?
So, environmental, we did have our bike corral at the Art Bash, we were by Clark's Ice Cream, and we didn't do as much business as in previous years, but we got a lot of positive feedback from, from people that did use the bike corral. And given it was our, I think, the first bike corral in three years, I think, so, it takes time to get up and running again, the, the committee wants to keep doing bike corrals, and we might expand to other Berkeley events, so, that's my report from environmental.
Any other?
No, I'm nobody.
DDA had their pride block party last weekend, on Sunday, and it was amazing, there were, I can't even, I would, there was a lot, 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 like, at some point we went, "We aren't going to be able to fit all these people, we're not sure what we're going to do." And it was beautiful, it was lovely, I think everybody was happy, and, ah, it was awesome, it was a great committee to work with, too, and, yeah, we're waiting for next year, because it was awesome, so yay. And I don't, I don't know, I don't think there was a DDA meeting since our last meeting here, so, that's all I have to report. And so now commissioner, staff comments.
We going through row?
Does anybody have them? I don't want to put anybody on the spot, like you have to make a comment.
No, I just want to say, or you can go first.
Well, this is my last meeting, I have been on the commission for 11 years, I've been through three mayors, three planning directors, and two city managers. And it's been a very rewarding experience, especially working with all the different commissioners that I have worked with and city staff. I'm kind of reluctant to leave, but frankly, getting to the point where I can't really hear the colloquy very well anymore, and I want to kind of move on with my life, so, it's time to move on, but it's been, it's been great, and, you know, I wouldn't, wouldn't leave if I didn't think that the commission was in good shape, in good hands, and has a good future. And I don't think I'm telling tales out of school to say that our other long-term commissioner that left recently, he feels exactly the same way about it, so, we're pretty optimistic about the future of Berkeley, so, thank you all for being great commissioners, and I'm going to stay on with environmental, so, I hope to work with city administration and possibly even the planning commission on future projects.
I was just going to wish Mark well, but I can't top that, so, good luck, and thank you for your support to the commission.
Yes, thank you very much.
Years of service to us.
Thank you. And again, thank you to Marty, which never get, really gave us a chance to do this. Staff, do you have anything to?
Well, just the, thanks to Commissioner Richardson, especially your participation in the master plan steering committee in here.
That was rewarding, yeah.
You've got two new members coming in July?
I had something.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I'm just going to, I'm not going to be here next month. I have a concert, so.
Okay, sorry. Well, you will miss Vincetta Garage if they are on, they resubmitted plans, and there will be a sketch plan for Moses Roses, otherwise known as, I think, Yellow Tail, so that's the last marijuana provisioning center of the five that got an initial license from city council. And at that meeting, Kristin Kapalansky will be your. Um, and at that meeting, Kristin Kapalansky will be your, um, community development director, and you'll have two new planning commissioners. There still would be two seats that, because of Kristin will, has resigned, or will resign, and in order to take the, the community development director job. So if you know of anyone who you feel that would be great to sit on this board with, please, um, share those names with Kristin in the city manager's office. And I just want to thank everybody, um, for helping me, uh, while I've sat in this chair. I've learned a lot, um, and I've made a lot of mistakes, and you've all been very graceful with those, so thank you.
Well, it was, it was pretty tough stepping in like that, and with, with all these projects, so I commend you for the job you, you have done.
Yeah, you went zero to sixty like fat, so well done.
And then some.
I feel like I've seen you, like, because of the steering committee, like, like, wait, I don't get to see Megan every month now? I don't know what to do.
Well, Carl Rowman would bid for a zoning ordinance, so...
So, next, next month we'll have a quorum? Or no, there'll be...
No, um, so, it, it, so you would have seven members. If Julie wasn't here, there would be six in attendance.
And then Kristin.
You need to at least have five, because...
Kristin won't be here either?
No.
In this capacity?
Yes, but Mateo, um, Pasalakwa, and...
Lisa.
Hamamay, um, are coming in, they'll be sworn in, and they'll be here at your June, at your July, at your July meeting, end of July meeting.
Okay, so we should have enough?
And we, we need five, right?
You need five for a quorum to have a meeting, and that's by the bylaws.
And at that meeting, we do elections again.
And at that meeting, you do elections again by your bylaws, by your rules of procedure.
As long as we have enough for next, like, as long as we're not canceling next month.
No.
Is planning commission math here?
Yeah. Like five.
There's a lot of change.
As long as we're here, and then the plus two will be, will have six.
Yes, so we could lose one more, but please don't be tempted to take that trip.
No one else gets to go to a concert.
No one else goes to the Chicago concert.
All right.
And is that election, officer election?
Officers of election, so if you would like to be the secretary, vice chair, or chair, think upon it.
They're all open.
Let people know.
And they're, I think they're always all open, like, from year to year.
They have to elect a temporary chair to chair the election part of the meeting before...
I believe so, and we'll figure that out before we drop the agenda.
All right, so, do your job.
Oh, um, motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's adjourned.
I hate when meetings just drag to drag, you know? At work, I'm like...